It's a couple of five, so it's a. And like you see, no, you don't see. Yeah, there will, I think, not be a video from me today.
Okay.
I have that sometimes as well, because it seems like if my video conflicts or whatever, and then I have to kind of switch it off and switch it on again, so I feel you.
Right, let's turn this off.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Tassilo, how you doing?
Hello.
Actually, the AC of yesterday night got me a little sick today. Good reason to stay in bed and some coding.
There's always a good reason to stay in bed.
I was gonna say, so you're making up excuses, huh? So you can code?
Alright. Shall we get started?
Hello, guys.
Hello, how you doing?
Shima.
Hello, Shima. Oh, you're logged in with a different account.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I wanted you guys to know, wasn't it?
That's good. Yeah, reminder from Anya, we're live on Twitch, so you know. So you know.
Okay.
Good stuff.
Nice, yet a bit confusing background.
Yeah, I'm gonna get some terminal up at least. I don't have any slides for today or anything, but... What do I? No, I don't, actually.
There is me too.
Alright, are we live? Are we live?
Uh, yes, we are.
Oh, we are, okay. Okay, okay, sorry, sorry. Uh, right, so we had a great discussion yesterday about, yesterday about Firebase. And we'll see who joins in today, but the idea for today is not to do so much talking, but rather do a little bit of coding. I think that will be interesting, and I know that we recently covered, we recently covered the, the, um, the testing framework that is used for end-to-end testing in, on, end-to-end testing of our web-based applications, sorry about that. And, uh, sorry about the stutter, but Cypress I O, right? And I think that, given that we will be, A, using, or React in, uh, in our project, and B, that we only scratched the surface of Cypress I O in our first presentation, and C, that repetition is the mother of all learning. So I reckon that we should take a look at, uh, doing a little bit of React and test drive a few small features, uh, using, using Cypress, one way or another. And that's, that's, so that's the plan for today, and I see that Mirsa joined us today. Hopefully, you have something in store for us, like fetching a little bit of data, or, or perhaps we can, we can do a little bit of setup of, of, of Firebase and create a little bit of whatever, like an endpoint, and fetch some stuff, using, whether it's Axios or direct fetch methods from, from Firebase or what have you, so we can display a little bit of data, uh, on our, in our React application, scaffolded React app. I hope that sounds interesting for you guys. Um, because that's exactly what's gonna happen. So if you wanna code along, you code along. If you don't wanna code along, you can code afterwards.
I'm already looking forward to redoing it tomorrow.
Okay, good stuff. Take notes. So it's either a code-along or a note-along or a nod-along, uh, demo or workshop, so. I think I just coined a new expression. Okay, uh, let's have a look. What can we do? We can create a small application, and, um, okay, so, so we're gonna use Cypress, and we're gonna use this Create React App. That is like a script from Facebook that allows us to create new React applications with a set of, of best practices. Just a disclaimer now, if you want to set up your own React application, you can do that. It's, um, it's totally doable. Actually, in my courses, I usually, uh, submit my students through the process of actually setting up React manually, 100% manually, uh, and, uh, that is quite painful, uh, because there are so many settings that you have to go through and, uh, and, um, and tweak and so on. So it's much smarter to use a scaffolder or a generator, application generator. Uh, so Create React App comes from, uh, it is created by, um, by Facebook, and I would say that it's the best way to, to do it. Um, I don't know, Mirsa, if you agree with me on this one, but, uh, I would say that the Create React App is the best, best way if you wanna get started with React.
Yeah, I think so. You get everything set up, then you can tweak it after how you want it.
Exactly, exactly. So let's do that, basically. Let's just go in and say, now I'm gonna use Yarn, because that's what I do, and I know that Anya is like fighting that she doesn't want to use Yarn. She was like, "I wanna use NPM", and that's perfectly fine, of course. I'm just kidding.
There will be an NPM demo tomorrow morning to counter that.
Exactly, so I'm gonna do it using Yarn, and then, uh, then, uh, Anya will do it using NPM tomorrow, basically. Just to piss me off, no, just, just to be on that side. So in Yarn, we just do yarn create, and then we say React App. Uh, like this. Now, if you use, if you use NPM, and it was really long time ago since I did that, you, I guess you say, "npx create react app", something like that. Anyway, and so we're gonna have to give this application a name, so let's figure out a good name for the app. We could just be very, very boring and say "React Demo", for instance, um, or we can call it "First, First React App", or whatever we want to call it, it doesn't really matter. So let's do with "First React App". And so this one will go through the installation process, give us a lot of info and warnings, and we can always be happy that we're using Yarn and not NPM, because the amount of warnings is not... There are less warnings in Yarn for some reason. I don't know if Yarn resolves the, the, any issues, or if I'm just sticking my head in the sand and just not, just ignore all the warnings, um, I'm not really, really sure, but it's usually, uh, right, it's, it's usually, uh, a less painful process to do, do this using Yarn. Do you know, Mirsa, what's the big difference between Yarn and NPM is, actually?
Uh, Yarn is better. No, the, the thing is that, uh, before, uh, NPM was slow, so developers got pissed and created Yarn, but now NPM realized that, yeah, we need to speed that up. So they are like equal, but then it's just more of like a preference thing when it comes to, then, then, I don't know, I feel like Yarn is more in mutual, because you do yarn add and stuff instead of going all that NPM stuff, but it's more like a preference thing now, because they're both really good.
Okay, well, there you go. So it's just a matter of...
Donik also says that Yarn was more secure back then, apparently.
Okay, okay. There's so many things happening in the JavaScript world, so, you know, there's always gonna be something new and different and so on. Uh, now, Donik also mentioned Vita, Vita or Vit, or what is that? Let's see, I'm just curious, I'm a curious person, so Vit, React, what is that? Announcing Vit 2.0, next-gen front-end tooling, it's fast. Okay, it's fast because they use one of those, those lightnings in their logo, that implies that it's fast. Well, I will check it out. Thank you for the tip. Uh, I will check it out at some point. But we just did install this baby, and we can just take it for a spin, we should always try that, so, uh, I know that we can, well, I assume that we can do yarn start. Uh, once this has been installed, well, it said so on the screen, so we should be able to do yarn start. And this opens up localhost 3000, and we have the fantastic spinning logo of, of React and, um, and some text, so the application is clearly working. That's nice. I'm gonna shut it down. I don't need it for anything. So I'm gonna open up my editor, and the first thing I will do is to actually clean up some stuff. Now, the, I'm gonna talk you through what's, what's going on. Uh, and, and I'm gonna clean up, uh, some of the things. First of all, we have, um, we have the known modules folder, which contains all of this, all of this stuff that we are depending on. Then we have the public folder and the source folder. The public folder is, is, contains, uh, the index HTML, which I often refer to as like the entry point to the application, that, that will be the, uh, the, uh, HTML file or the resource that is being loaded when we, uh, when we ask for this URL. There's some commented out code here and some, some, um, some instructions what you can do, but basically, this is a very, very simple, uh, HTML file that is being loaded. It, there's a title here, uh, that says "React App", so I can just, uh, "first React" action, uh, right, if I want to change the title for anything. And then we have a "no script" tag, which will be displayed if you try to access this, uh, this site on, um, on a browser that doesn't deal with JavaScript, and there are actually browsers like that somewhere on some device, uh. It, I don't think there are many of them, but if there is, you could, you just simply can't execute the React application, because React is a JavaScript framework and/or library, so if you don't execute JavaScript, you're fucked. You're, um, you can't do anything. And then there is this, line 31, and there is a div that has an ID, and the ID is set to root. That's the convention in this Create React App world, right? This is the div that will contain the entire application. Uh, whatever you, you, uh, seem, you want to display, will be displayed in, in that particular, uh, div. And that's the only thing we need to know about this HTML file, to be honest. There are certain instances when you wanna go in and change, uh, line 6 in terms of viewports, if you want to do some tweaking to, to make it display a little better on mobile devices, and I assume that there is, uh, there is some CEO settings you want to use here and yada, yada, but, but for now, for today, the only thing we care about is that this div exists and it, it has the ID of root. And why is that important? Well, it is important because we're gonna take a look at another file that comes, um, comes into play here. And that file is in the source folder, and, and it is called "index.js". Now, what we do here in this file is that we import React, the, the React library and the React DOM library from, um, from their respective sources. And then we tell the React DOM library to render the app component using strict mode, but that's, that's not super important at this point. Now, the render function takes two arguments. It takes the first argument, which is this, which is the, the components that you want to render, and then as a second argument, it's, you have to tell, um, the React DOM library where to render this. And we render the, these components inside of this document div that has the ID of root, because we say "document get element by ID root", so we take that div, and that's where we, uh, that's, that's where we, uh, we, we display the whole thing. And then there are some reporter, don't worry about this, I, I will not cover this at all today, what the report, report web vitals is. Doesn't really matter. Uh, the question about the, uh, the size of the library, yeah, that is an extension that, uh, shows me how big these, uh, these dependencies are, and apparently the React DOM is a little too big to be liked by, by this, this, uh, extension, that's why it's in red. But other than that, um, they are pretty, uh, they are pretty okay. Now, why is this important? Why do you want to know how big a dependency is? Because of the fact that a lot of developers just keep on adding dependencies all the time, and all of the sudden, you, you, uh, you have, um, uh, bad performance, you know, so you want to be a bit careful with this. Now, I'm gonna actually remove the report vitals, I don't need it for anything, so I'm just gonna clean this up. I'm also going to, uh, I'm also going to, I'm gonna remove the CSS from here, I don't need it for anything right now. And I'm considering whether I should keep the strict mode, I can do that, I guess, doesn't really matter for now. But other than that, I'm gonna leave this file as it is, it's gonna, I'm gonna keep the name "index.js", that's gonna be completely fine. I will, however, remove app CSS. I'm gonna do a little bit of cleaning, so I'm gonna remove this guy. And I'm also going, going to remove the index CSS, I don't need it for anything. I want to write my own, own CSS, and I wanna do it probably in a slightly different way than, than the scaffolder did. I'm gonna remove the app dot test JS. It's a scaffolded test, doesn't do anything for me. If I'm gonna use, uh, Jest and, uh, the React testing library, I will do it slightly different anyway, so I'm just gonna remove that. And you guys, you know, if you, if you're, if you're starting out with, with, uh, with React, you should actually do this spring cleaning, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, because otherwise you end up with way too many files in your, in your folder, and, um, it's better to, to, um, have as few files as possible in, um, in, in your, in your folder and in your project, which means that I can remove the setup test JS, don't need it for anything. I can do that, I can recreate this one later if I, if I need it. I'm gonna remove this fantastic spinning logo of React, will not use it for anything, so there's no need to keep it around. Now, there is a logo 192 and logo 512 here in the public folder, I'm gonna probably remove them, well, I will remove them both, don't need it for anything, and so on. Right. And there is a Favico, okay, we can keep this one, doesn't matter, unless you do your, have your own, you can keep, keep this around. And now we have, to be honest, we have very few files now, we have the app JS, the index JS, report web vitals, we can get rid of that, we don't need it. And that's it, right? We have a very, very slim, small project here with almost no, no code. Now, there always have one thing that I do, and you might or might not agree with me, and that is to change the, um, the name of app JS to app JSX. And I will tell you why. Uh, because app JSX is a React component, and it returns JSX. So I want to kinda, or TSX if you want, if you wanna use TypeScript. We're not gonna cover TypeScript today, uh, yet. Uh, we have to start small, Mirsa, that's, that's why I'm not gonna, gonna, gonna do that. Now, so, so, uh, when you work with React, you often work with components, that's what, that's the whole point, right? Uh, so you break up your user interface into smaller, uh, into smaller pieces, and you, you use them or reuse them or, and, and so on, right? That is the strength of, of, of React. And, but you also mix sometimes, you know, like some of the things are being, uh, will be contained in, in components, but you will also use vanilla JavaScript to do some other things, some side things, like process a little bit of data or what have you. And so in my workflow, I make that distinction. So if it's a component, then I call it JSX, if it actually returns JSX. And if it's a function, or a module, or a class, or what have you, then I call those files JS. And at this stage, even though this is not a, um, introduction or demo of, of React, we, we will focus more on testing, but the difference between a component and a function is very slim. Uh, it is pretty much the same thing, but the, the only difference is that a, a function accepts some data in as arguments and returns some data, whereas a component does not return data per se, but rather user interface. Uh, it, it returns a piece of UI, uh, and that is the only difference, to be honest, between, between those, those, uh, those two. Yeah. So I've changed this to app JSX, and I can also change the, um, the format here, so I can get this fantastic logo on the side of a JSX file, because I tell my VS Code that this is a React, React component. And now, I need to point you to, uh, to an extension that I use, and that is ES7. Right, this one. ES7 React Redux GraphQL React Native Snippets. It's a very long name, uh, but that's, that's the extension that I use, uh, a lot, because if I have this installed, then I will get a lot of code for free. And it's, it becomes relevant now, because we will modify the app JSX, the content of the app JSX file. So I will be very drastic, I will select everything inside of that file and simply delete it. Uh, because if you look at it, we are importing the logo, we are importing the app CSS, we don't need that for anything and all of the weird stuff, right? So I will just delete the whole damn thing. And here, I will use a shorthand, uh, that I have memorized by its abbreviation. So it's gonna be Royal Air Force Central Europe, RAF. And that will give me a React, a functional React component, just the way I like it. So again, quickly, R A F C E, Royal, Royal Air Force Central Europe. And boom, I get, uh, some free code. That's how I remember, remember this. When I was a kid, I used to do those model airplanes, and Royal Air Force was very popular, uh, so yeah, anyway. And now I have this, and here I can just add some, some, uh, some text, hopefully. No, he doesn't want to do that for me today, my AMAC is not working. Hello, world. Uh, this is a very basic React component, nothing extraordinary. I am a sucker on creating my components as constants and exporting them at the bottom. There are other styles, and you can choose whatever style you want to use, but for me, uh, this works. And Mirsa is, uh, giving me a sign of approval, for which I am extremely grateful, uh, because then it feels like I'm actually know what the fuck, what, what I'm doing here. Right. So here we are, right, and we miss you in the stream, are, are you here? Perhaps he is here. Oh, he's not. Okay, so let's just spin this guy up, uh, again, so we do yarn start. And you can see that now it says "hello world", so we got rid of the spinning logo, we got rid of everything else, and we have the, uh, uh, the thing, the thing, the hello world stuff, right? Okay, so let's take a look at setting up the testing framework that we want to use on this one. No, 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 pass, no, clear, there you go, okay. So, uh, what I want to use is, I, I want to install a few, um, a few dependencies, uh, and this is my workflow, and we can have a discussion, because we do have some developers here, if you guys think this is, uh, valid or not. But what I will do is to say yarn add as a dev dependency, so I pass in the capital D, and I will use, I will add Cypress, right, of course. But I will also add, I will also add, uh, a small library that is called start server and test. Start server and test. And just hit enter on this one. And so now we wonder, what does start server and test do? Well, it starts server and executes your tests, that's, uh, what the name, name kind of implies. And so that will be the best course of action for us, that's this, that's the lowest hanging fruit, and I like those things. Okay, it's time for us to dive into the package JSON that we were given by, uh, by the Create React App scaffolder. And we have a lot of, uh, lot of settings here, uh, that we don't really care about at this stage so much, like the ESLINT config, React app, you know, it's just, there are some configuration settings for, for ESLINT and the browser list and all of that stuff. Doesn't really, really concerns us. What does concern, concern us is our scripts. And mainly, this one, I wanna talk about the one online, sorry, the one online 18, that will, that is named eject. Now, if we would run this, uh, this script, you should be very careful with running this, because if you do run this one, then you are leaving the Create React App configuration heaven, safe place of, of having everything configured for you. It allows you to, it just brings everything up to the surface, all the underlying settings, and changes a lot of things, uh, for you, and as a beginner, you should not use that script. And it's actually, uh, so dangerous, quote unquote, that when you do run it, they ask you, "Are you really sure you know what you're doing?" Uh, so you get a chance to back out of this, uh, what would say. What I will do is like, I can remove this, just, or, you know, if, I always advise beginners to just get rid of that, uh, and just stay in the safe zone of the Create React App pre-configured settings. There are quite a few use cases where you want to eject, but, uh, not for you, not now, and definitely not in this workshop. Right. Uh, there, there's very, it's, it's, it's not possible to comment out code in, in JSON files, so that's not possible. Uh, and the webpack configuration, uh, Mirsa, you're totally right, if you want to do some, some, some corner cases, then, then definitely, it is not really possible to do that in unejected or in, in managed, Create React App. You can do it if you eject. Uh, but then again, I would also claim that nowadays, when Create React App comes with SASS compilers and all of these settings, you don't really have to eject, but, you know. Right. So what I will...
Sorry, there was a question from the chat. Why not use NPM start instead of installing extra package?
Because, because, why, why, why? Well, when you start your test servers, it is actually, my experience, and I might, I might be wrong on this one, but my experience tells me that it's faster to spin, spin it up with, uh, with the create, um, with the start server and test command. But I might be wrong, we can run... We can run a few, a few a few few benchmarks or, you know, some 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 tests on it. I don't know, I just, yeah, it was faster. That's why we started to do that, I guess. Mirsad, your thoughts on this?
What command are you running to run the test?
I will show you in just a second.
Yeah, because you can add that as a script.
Yeah, yeah. So 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 here's the, here's the thing. I will, I will add a script here to say. So we can do, you know, the 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 basic CI open, which we will open Cypress. So we will say Cypress open. And then I will do another command. Now, I'm wondering if I'm doing this too complicated. Let's let's have a look. So if I create another one that is called Cypress. Right, Cypress. And here I will say start start server and run. Dammit, now that I think of it, is this really the best way to do this? I don't know. And then you, then we're just gonna say start yarn start. And then I'm gonna also say HTTP. So we're gonna wait for HTTP localhost host 3000. That's what this, so so what start server and run it does, it's it starts the server and waits for the local host 3000 to be fully loaded. And then we just do CI open like this. But I will also add right. I will also say browser browser equals none. Here, let's see if that works, right? Because I don't want to open up a new browser when I when I run yarn start, because it will not will not, I, you know, Cypress comes with its own browser, basically. So that's that's what I'm what I'm doing. But it's an interesting question then, Nightlight, 90. I I I think that the biggest upside with this one is to wait for this to be fully loaded before Cypress starts. I would, I think that's the, that's the thing that I'm looking for. Let's see if this even works. So if I do yarn Cypress now. Remember in my first demo, I had it to start the server in one terminal and then run the tests in another one. Here, with this setup, I have a combined thing. Really? Start server and test and not run, Thomas, come on. I was just checking if you guys were paying attention. So, yeah. Here we go. Oh. 80, 80, right, well, thank you. Now, bum bum bum. Really? Hmm, okay. Now I'm getting a bit confused, to be honest. Browser none, okay, hold on a second. Let's let's just do this. First of all, it's port. Okay, so I'm gonna move this out from here and I'm gonna create another one called start silent. I, come on, give me a break. There we go. And then react scripts. Start. Right. And so we're gonna say this. And I'm gonna say silence. And then I'm gonna wait for this and CI open. Why are you giving me hard time? Why are you giving me hard time? I've done this hundreds of times. Now it works, all right. Oof, okay. So it started the server. And now it runs Cypress. And now it just does the same thing that it does for the first time when we run Cypress in a project. And it creates all the folder structures and all of this, these things and the the example. The example specs that we're gonna delete in just a second. I just it's a proof that it 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 works now. So I'm gonna close this, go over to the newly created Cypress folder, the integration one, and I'm gonna delete delete these subfolders like this. Okay. And here, I would just create, I will create a new a new test in just a second. But before we do, we're gonna go into Cypress dot JSON. This is another file that we didn't talk about last time. Here, you can actually add bits of configuration that might prove useful. So for instance, we can add base URL. Here, base URL setting will be the local, the default address to your local server. So here we can do HTTP local host 3000. And then we can change security setting that is often good to add this because it allows us to to work with to work with network resources, like fetching data and stuff. So I usually add this one and that is, it's called web, no, Chrome Web Security, Chrome Web Security in test environment. And we just set this to false. And we can do other stuff here. We can say viewport width and viewport height. If you want to control what what view, what width and height your 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 browser will have in test environment, but we don't have to do this here. This is like a minimal setting. Then we don't, if we have this base URL, we don't have to say that later on in 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 tests. But let's just write a very simple test here. User can can access application dot feature dot JS. User can access application and we have a describe block. Actually, I can add describe and eat. So user that visits app. And we can say he's expected to see hello world. Hello world. And so here we can do CI visit. And now, since I do have this base URL, URL set up in my in my in my Cypress JSON, the only thing I need to do is this. If I'm not using any internal routing. And then I can say CI get. And let's say that we are looking for the body tag, body. And then we say should contain text, for instance, and that would be hello world, right? Okay, and we get some warnings here on CY. And we can fix that really easy. We can cheat and just say we can place this here, quick fix, disable, no undefined for the entire file. Boom. Hey, we we don't get this warning anymore. We can set this as this ESLINT setting throughout the entire project. Somehow, I don't remember how it's being done, so we're probably not gonna do it today. Unless Mirsad or anybody else finds that setting for me. And we fixed the typo instead of sit, we actually say visit. Yeah, thank you, Raisen. Thank you for that. I think we spotted it at the same time. Get body should contain text, yada, yada. Let's run this. So we do yarn Cypress in our terminal. And we can go hopefully green on this one. Yep. Expect body to contain text, hello world. We should, we are green on this one. Okay. Okay. Right. So how about how about fetching some data, for instance? Now, let's start with something simple. Let's start with site. So we're gonna do restful stuff first and perhaps we can do some some fetch some data from some Firebase source. But for practice purposes, we often use some sort of fake APIs. And so there is one. There is a site that is called the recrest.in Pokemon API. Is there a Pokemon API? Really? Is it restful? Okay, I'm willing to, I'm willing to try. Let's have a look. Pokemon API. Raisen, you always challenge me to new stuff. Right. Poke API V2 Pokemon Tito. Tito, is this like a, is that a Pokemon then? This, is this a Pokemon name of a specific Pokemon? Does anybody know Pokemon here? Apart from Raisen, apparently. Tito is a Pokemon, okay, all right, okay. So Pikachu is another, the only one I know is Pikachu, because my seven year old plays with Pokemon all the time. But I guess so, I don't even know how to spell it. Pikachu, is that, have you spell it? No, that's not found. That's not how you spell it. Pika. Yeah. Pikachu. Pika. Pikachu, okay, so no, no T. All right. Let's see if there is one. Yes, there is one, okay, good stuff. We're gonna use, we're gonna use this one. We're gonna use that particular one. So so let's say that we want to read about Pikachu, right? So we can say that in our test in a before block. If if we actually hit if our application tries to make a call intercept, 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 right? If our application tries to make a call to any anything that contains Pokemon Pikachu, then we want to respond with a fixture. Fixure, and we're gonna call this fixture Pikachu response about JSON. Right? So we probably need to create this file, because we don't have a file like this. So you see, in our Cypress folder, we have a subfolder called fixtures. So I'm gonna create a new file and call it Pikachu response JSON. And in this file, I want to place JSON response. And the JSON response will be this. So I'm just gonna copy all of that stuff. Place this inside of here. And that was not a, that was not a valid just JSON response. Or was it? Right. No, that's, that's every, that's a lot of Pikachu, yeah. It's a little too much now, isn't it? That's not what I was hoping for. Really? Let's do this instead. Let's just, well, is this, is all of that about? No, come on. Not 898 lines, are you shitting me? That's a really weird. That's the really weird. I don't have F, F, F things, F keys. What the fuck? Really? Can I just, don't wait up. So can I just? Okay, let's just do this. Right, okay. Right. So that was I was a, that was a big that was a big response, that's a little too big for a demo, but let's go with poke, you know. Pedro, it's 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 you, you know. You're responsible for this. Okay. So let's let's do what? Yeah, let's go to our abilities, basic experiment forms, game indices. Is there a name or something? Is there like a a name attribute here? Okay, G. Sapphire. Speed types. What sort of info can we get here? Abilities limber, base experience, game indices, game index. You know what, I I don't think I'm gonna use this one, actually, you know? Because there is, it's very hard for me to find any useful data in this. Right at the end of the response. Yeah. Right. You know what? Let's, 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 let's forget about Pokemons, you know? Yeah, let's, yeah, let's forget, let's, let's just do some, some very boring business stuff. Let's, let's just list a little bit of users. Carmen, you said, what, what did you say, Carmen? Offset ability limit.
Yeah, because it does have a name and URL. I feel like you could use that. It's very short. It has like a limit of 20.
Let's have a look.
Will that work?
Ability offset, V2 ability, offset limit. Section caps, intermediate shadow tag. Yeah, but that doesn't contain the name of the of the Pokemon itself.
No, just
Yeah, yeah. No, let's, 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 let's forget about that for now. Let's, that's just, yeah, no, let's, right. We, I'm gonna rename this and I'm gonna call it users. Let's, let's just list a few users, okay, guys? It's gonna be a bit boring, but at least manageable for us at this point. So I'm gonna rename this file to users response. I'm sorry, Pedro, to make you disappointed. And and then we're just gonna go to that. We're gonna forget about this. Right, so we're gonna go over here. And so if we ask this particular API for some users, we will get this kind of response. Let's take a look at this. Well, actually, this is the second, second. Second one, let's see if we can do page one instead of users. Let's just do this. Right. So we have George and Janet and Emma. Here we have first name, last name, very simple data structure. Nothing in particular. Here we have a little bit of meta metadata about the about the response. It is also paginated. So this is page one. It displays six users per page. There are totally twelve pages, 12 pages and no, 12 users, sorry, and two pages. Okay. So we will just take this with us. This URL with us. And we will tell our test to ignore everything from this particular URL. Well, actually, we can just do a wild card here, bum, bum, API users. And that will be users response. Not Pikachu response, users response. Right? And it's just format our code. And that will be in the before block and not here. So we're just gonna move this up like this. Okay. All right. So in my app G S X, I will not create a subcomponent, but rather do this inside of one single component. I'm gonna say use effect and use state. And here I will just say that const fetch users equals a function. And I will also here I want to make make a call. So I'm gonna make this in the synchronous kind of function, right? And I want to make a network call, and I could use the built-in. I can use the built-in fetch function that is built in JavaScript. But it's more convenient for me to use Axios. Because I like Axios. It's slightly simpler syntax, and it's not that super big. So I'm just gonna add Axios as a dependency. And I can do that without stopping the server. So I can just open up a terminal in my VS Code and just say yarn add Axios. Like this, and it will be added in, in my main dependencies. And so here I could say response, well, const response equals await Axios. Await Axios dot get. Make a get request. Remember, we spoke about this at some point. And we want to just get everything that this this API provides, but we need to import Axios from Axios in order to do that. Like this. Okay, so. And then we just do turn response. Not return, actually. We we want to set this in state, the users. We want, we want to set users in the, in the component state, so I can say const and then the use state works like this. You have a setter and a getter. So the getter, it will be called users. And the setter will be called set users in this case, for instance. And then we just say use state. And we want the state to be an empty array to start with. Because it's best for us. And then we will just say, whatever, whenever we get this response back, we will say set users to response. Response data. But since this user response is restful-ish, semi-restful, then we want this, this data, this array that is in data being sent to our users. So in this particular case, I need to say set users response data, data, which is weird as fuck, but that's the way it is. And so we want to do this on the initial when we load the, the component. So we will say use effect. And then gonna set this to empty, no cleanup. So we just want to say fetch. Fetch users. I think that's enough. And we will deal with this in just a second, but what we want to say in our test is also it is expected to display six, six users. Or info about six users information. Six users. So we can say something like CI. We can actually move the CI visit to the before block. So we always visit the, the site. And here we can say CI get. And I can use data C Y as we did before. Data C Y. And I will call that. Again, I haven't written any code yet in terms of visual, the visual. So I can say data C Y, call it like users list. And then to say that children should 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 equal or have length of and that gets have length, have, have, come on, Thomas. Have length. Six. Right? Okay. Right, right, right. And if I keep on running this now, this will, of course, fail for me. Because he's trying to look for a users list. There is no such thing. So I can change that in my app G S X. For instance, I can do div. Users list. Oh, for some reason, my Emmet is not working, really. And div. And then ID users list. Something like that. We check the test. And now he does find it. Users list, no? Because I gave it an ID and not data C Y. So thank you for that, Thomas. And now he's looking for six children, but we don't have six children, of course, right? So perhaps this shouldn't be a div, but rather oops. Rather a unnumbered list. Let's call it an unnumbered list. So if we now have this, this these users, we can say let users list equal users dot map. And then that will return a user. And then just do this, and we say return. And this will return a bit of user interface. So I will say list item. And I will give it a key. Because I need to give it a key. And that will be well, the key will be the user dot ID, because I know that I have one. And here I will just say user dot first name. First name, the users list, right? And so I will take this users list and display it here in my main return statement of this of this component. You let users list, users map, all of this. Okay, looks good to me. Format. There is no first name, really? There should be a first name. No, it's email. First name. Oh, because it's first underscore name. Okay. There we go. Right? And so now we're displaying this, this data. And that we just fetched from the API. And now if I just go into this this fixture, and I change this to Thomas. And I change this to Mirsad. And then Anya. And whatever, right? In my fixture, you will see that my, in my test, hopefully, we're displaying that, do you understand? We are displaying the fixture file. If I now go in here into my test and comment out this line, this interceptor. And I rerun the test. Now we're actually gonna make the call to the real API. And now it's George, Janet and Emma. You understand? So you can intercept the call with this with this line of code here. We are actually telling the test environment, do not make the, the API call. Use my fake data that I have in my users response. And this is an extremely important thing to, to, to know about, because you don't want to make real you don't want to make the, the, the call when you run your tests. And this is the basic setup. You can, you can respond with a lot of stuff here, to be honest. Let's let's say that if you, so by default, you were responding with status code 200, but you can respond with a 404, you can respond with a 500 that or, or unauthorized that or what have you. So there's a lot of settings you can do within, with an intercept. I'm scratching the surface here a little bit, but still. And then we can also say something like we can change this test to say children first should equal equal. Oh, well, no, yeah, we can do, no, contain, contain text is better, actually. And we can say Thomas here. I think I used myself, my first name. I'm egocentric, so I usually do that. And then right, that goes green. No? Yeah, there we go. See, it goes green. And then we could say something like dot next. And we can say should contain text. Here's that. For instance. But next, right. I think this should work. This should give, shouldn't give me this shouldn't give me an error. Why are you giving me an error? Really?
Semi-colon before the line.
Oh, yeah. Thanks. Right. Yeah. And it, it works, right? So the first one should be Thomas and then Mirsad. So we can chain those assertions a lot, you know, if you want to do that. Now, this test is about just displaying six users. So counting those children is actually a better way, but I just wanted to show you another method to, to, to do that. The same thing. Now, if you, if you man, if you do something weird that you, so for instance, if you, if I change this this API, if I missed, say, users, but I say user, for instance, right? Then it will actually display the real data. And the test will fail, will fail, of course, right? Because you cannot run the assertions that you've, you've read, you've added, added yourself. So it is not a bad idea to actually check for content from time to time, perhaps not always, and not for all content. But, you know, by saying Thomas and Mirsad, and I, and actually use that in your response, is not a, not a bad idea. So it actually differs a bit from the actual, actual actual response that you will get from the live API. So you have to be really careful with, with the, the URL. And also, in your test runner, you do see here, if you open, sorry, if you open this up, you see that there is this routes setting. You can open it up. And it says route matcher API users, and it's stubbed, you understand? Right? So so this intercepting of of responses or requests are actually called stubbing, right? So we could in principle just add a new describe block here. And say is it with this app and, and the API is working as it should. Then we run these tests. So we can move them in here. And here we can say, we can create a new describe block. And the, the API is not working, not working. Let's say it, it broke. It's, it returns us 500 errors, right? For some reason. 500 error. And so we can do a very similar similar before. We still want to visit the app, but here I don't want to use this fixture anymore. But I will just say error response. Dot JSON, for instance. I don't actually have to do that. I make the same call API users, but I get an error response. Well, actually, you know what? I'm not gonna use a fixture file, but rather so I'm gonna say status code. I think it's status code. And I'm gonna say 500. And body, is it body? I think it's body. And that will be you know, error. At gateway. Something like that. I think I can do that. And then we can just say we can try to run this one, see if it works. If it right? Right. So that's, that, that should be okay. So we need to add an hit block. And we can say is expected to display this play and error. Right. And then we just say CI it, and we can do eta CY equals message. Message to should, sorry, should contain text at gateway or whatever. Bad gateway. Right? So this one will fail because there is no such thing as CI message. So we're going to have to add that. If why is my image not, why are you? Come on. And then we say it see why equals message. And here we will just set content of a message. Message variable, and we don't have that variable, right? So we probably want to say we can store that one in state. That's the simplest way of doing that. So we will say const message. And search. And then set message. And that would be equals use state. And I would just use a simp and, and empty array. And here I was instead of just waiting for the Axios, I would use a try catch method. So if everything works out, I will move in here. This is the tried, this is the happy path of this call. And here I will show you how you can debug your applications in Cypress, which is another important piece of action. So this, this block will kick in if there's an error. Or, or, or not. You know, and so here in, in my test runner, I can open up the developer tools like this, and I can rerun this test. And since we got on since we got a 500, the catch block kicked in. And we can take a look at the error, for instance. Request failed with status code. So we can say response, we can take a look at the response. Now we can take a look at this. So where's error? Message body is body. Body now data. Response.
Yeah. It's error dot message. Yeah.
Yeah. But I should get error.
Status code? Or what are you?
Yeah, error response and dot data. And yeah, if I want to get the message that I sent back, do you understand? I can do error response data error. In this case, or I can do error response that gives me status text, for instance. Let's, yeah, I don't know what I, what I should use. I did send off bad gateway, but that's, you know, that's just me. So I can just say error response status text, for instance. Right? We can get that. Yeah, we can use that. So we can say set message. Message. To this error response status text, I guess. And that would what was it? Internal server error, right? So I don't even have to. Right? So I don't even have to send this send this off. I just, I just do status code 500. Let's see. Right? And so we are just faking that we are not getting a response back from the API on this one. And we just you know, or we can do something like we can do something like sorry. The API responded with, and then right? So we get a little bit better user experience. Sorry, the API responded with internal server error. Right? And we are going green on this. And now if I just remove this dot only and run the entire test suite. We are good to go on everything. And I can bro, you know. No, what? No, no, no. Hello, world. Thomas. Yeah, here we go. Right? So I can, I can open them up and, and place my cursor over these things and I can still get my, my visual here. Remember, the debugger will only work if you have your developer tools open, right? And then you can, you can set your debugger precise, exactly wherever you want. Of course. But that's, that's the, that's what, what is needed is you have to you have to set that up in a way that so, so you, you add your debugger statement, but you have to have developer tools open. And so one thing that is up for refactoring here, of course, it depends a little bit what time it is, nine, yeah, it's 54, is 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 this return statement, right? So this is a good candidate for extraction to another component, do you understand? Because we are returning a lot of this list items. And in, at this case, we're only saying user first name. We could return user first name and last name and email address, perhaps the avatar and, and something like that. And instead of having that logic here in the app JSX, which is the highest component in this application, we could extract that into another component called users display element or card or whatever you want, right? You can put some of its own CSS on this and our own look and feel and so on. But I would argue that this is, this, what we just did here is the first step of of, of displaying something, right? So we can say user, users here instead of hello world. And we can change this to users. You see? Users. Had, for instance, or whatever. Heather, I don't know. And so on. And what else? Yeah, there's another thing. You see, I wrapped everything in a div here. Line 24 and 28. Okay, so, so this is interesting, or it's, it's important to know, and you will forget about this, and you will get errors later. That is that a component in React can only return one object or one node. It cannot return three nodes, for instance, or two, more than one, right? So in this case, if I would remove this div here, I will get an error directly in my, in my IDE. Because now we're returning the H1, the unnumbered list, and then the message div. That is not possible in React. You can only re, return one, one element. And so therefore, we need to wrap this in a, in a div like this. Because then you are only returning one element that in turns have three child elements, but that's not the, that's not a problem for React. You can only return one head, like top element. But quite often you don't want to return this div, because this div will be actually rendered on the, on the site. And you can see that here in in elements that you see there is like, let's see, where is, where are we? Here we are. Inspect. Right? So see, this div here is actually being rendered. And it's totally unnecessary for us to have it. It's not a big deal. But sometimes when you use too many divs in, in, you know, with a lot of CSS that could actually change the, the way things look on the screen. So you can use a workaround that looks like this, just empty, a totally empty, open and closed bracket. You know? This is called a fragment. So it's a React fragment. It's an equivalent of this. Like that, like this, right? React. Right? And this will not be rendered. So if we do, if we reload this guy now and we look at this this thing, you, you have the, the root div and then the H1, the UL and the div directly underneath. The fragment is never being rendered by the, by the browser. But you don't need to type all of this. You can use a shorthand that looks like this instead. And that's much better for you. So so that's good. Now, if we, now that, then we are on the subject of watching the rendered HTML, you have to understand that the only thing, as we said at some other point during this course, the only thing the browser understands is HTML, CSS and vanilla JavaScript. So all of this code that we are writing in React is never being rendered by the browser itself. It's being compiled into, into JavaScript and HTML and so on. So you see that what you see here is the ready-made product. But relating back to what we talked about in the beginning of this workshop, remember I showed you the index HTML page and the div with the ID of root. Everything that we are displaying on screen is inside of that div. You can clearly see that if you explore this closely. Right? I think that's, that's going to cover it for me, you know. We covered a lot of ground, even though we just did a very simple simple little app that fetches fetches a tiny little bit of data. But we did cover how it is to set up, you know, the process of setting up the React application using the create React app scaffold. We added the Cypress testing framework. We did manage to do a bit of networking using Axios. And in our in our test environment, we stopped or we, yeah, we stopped out that call, that request twice. In one test case, we actually returned a little bit of data. And in the second test case, we just said that, hey, what if, what if this doesn't work for us, right? If you want to use multi div, you can use div div. Yeah, if you, yeah. Yes. Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, you can do that. You know, fragments are good if you don't want to have things, things rendered on, on screen. For one reason or another. For me personally, in my personal workflow, I, I use fragments unless I really need to give this wrapper some sort of, of a class name, or if I use a like a container, like, like a different or, you know, CSS that is wrapped in a, in a, in a component structure and so on. But it's a, it's a different story. There, there is another, just a quick thing here. When we look at the test runner, if you look at the console, you also see that we are getting an error in the console for the 500. So this browser is, is convinced that we actually made a call to to that API and that API returned a 500 error for some reason. And we can change that to a 422 or whatever you want to change it to, what suits your, your let's do a 404, for instance. And then this will, this browser will think that it actually hit a 404. And now we we say API responded with not found, which makes our test break because we are looking for a different, different text output. So let's switch back to 500. So we can go green on this. And it has hot reloading. It keeps on running your tests if you do set it up properly. That's one of the things that actually happens with, when you have the server started on the same command as, as the testing framework. And so on and so forth. Right? Mirsa, did I miss anything?
No.
Good. Did you guys learn anything?
Yes.
Good. That's even better. That's even better. All right. Do we have more time or are we, we are on one or hour, one and a half hour, aren't we? Kind of. So any, can we do some Q and A? Do, Mirsa, do you have any, an endpoint that I could, I could use? Or should we save this for another day? There is some rain coming up for a rainy day.
We can save it for another day because I have something planned to go over. That we can like show how you set up the whole Firebase, initialize it and everything.
Yeah, that we can do. I think that's, that because it calls for, for for some deeper explanations, you know, and so on. But at this stage, you know how to do things and how to set things up. And I think that that you can get started with with React. I see that there's a discussion about Svelte, Svelte, this is called Svelte or Svelte or what is but I have a Svelte, yeah. I have a good friend that is dealing with this. I've been trying for a month or more than that to pull him in to do a demo with us. And he is always busy or we can't sync our calendars, basically. But he is a he actually uses Svelte in, in some production applications. He runs a consultancy firm here in Gothenburg. And he's a great advocate for that. So we'll definitely look into this one way or another. Having said this, folks, I will make sure to it status this. We created and deleted quite a few things. So git add this git status again, we're good, git commit AM first version of the React demo code. I'm going to be a bit cryptic on this one. I'm going to make sure to push this up to Adia Ventures. And I will create a new new repository. I'm going to, going to call this work the web first React app. Work the web first react app. And I will push this up so you guys can have something to fall back on if you need, apart from the video. So git remote add origin. This git remote add origin and git push origin main. There we go. So this one should should be there in place. And I can send this off to you guys here in chat and also in, on Twitch, if there is anyone interested in this code. Fork and clone, if you need. Use this to read through if there's anything you wonder about. The video will be made available ASAP, right, Anya? Right? And, and I think that kind of does it for us, right?
It's private.
Is it private? Oh, shit. Really? All right. Well, make public then. Right, make public. Oh. Right? Let's see if it's private now.
Nope, it's open.
It's open. Good stuff. Good stuff. Yeah, okay, folks. That was a fairly productive session, wasn't it?
Sure was.
And I just made a few typos, not that many typos.
I just had a quick question regarding the, still the project with Tassilo, I guess we how far are we in terms of open sourcing it? Since now?
Not closer today than we were yesterday, unfortunately. Mearsad, do you have time to stick around for like 10, 15 minutes after this, after this session?
Yeah, problem.
All right. Tassilo, do you have time to stick around for a while?
Yes, yes.
Anya, do you have time to stick around for a while?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Off stream?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And everybody else as well, of course. As long as we are off stream, then we should be good. Okay, then I just need to stretch my leg, do a very short break to the bio room, and then I will be right back, okay? Right, thank you for tonight. I see you guys next time.
Thank you, stream.
I'll be back soon.
Yeah, so I'll just I'll just put away the desktop audio. It was great, awesome stimulus. I'm happy you liked it. And I guess I'm just gonna raid over for now. We're gonna open sourceify the that was intended, but thank you. I'm just finishing saying bye to the, to the stream. So it's a learning project. No, actually, it's a real project. We're helping a charity here, and we first need to open source it. So so, yes, so yeah, so basically, we need to first do this off stream, because we're going to open sourceify the project, so to say. Like hide some credentials and stuff, and then whenever I work on a project, I'll be able to show it. That's the idea. And we'll see. So, wait. Let's do this. Oops. Sorry. So we're going to raid CMG or CM Griffin. How complex is it? You can check for yourself, the platform is this one, so it's already live and working. It's been like a project from, from Tassilo, it's a charity, and he did it like self-teaching dev. Easy credential, what? Yeah, so I think it's gonna be fairly complex for us, because we need to have a look at the code that he wrote and kind of make it a little bit rock solid and maybe put some tests and everything and yeah, and after that, implement some new features and maybe even wherever it makes sense, maybe put some Web3 kind of functionalities. So, yeah, so I guess looking forward. It looks basic, yeah, maybe it's basic for you. For me, it's really complex enough, you know. And I think I've heard that testing map stuff is apparently not that easy either, so it has a lot of pending tasks, yeah. It has a lot of pending tasks. So first, we want to make sure that it's solid and then implement new ones. Okay, you're gonna be raided, bye bye.